...our 2019 wastewater proceeding public hearing. My name is Leonard Tangis and I am Chair of the Rate Commission of Metropolitan St. Louis Soar District and will serve as Chair of this proceeding. We are live streaming this public hearing today. If you have any questions, please feel free to submit them online through the Rate Commission Facebook page or Twitter feed. The Charter of the District was approved by the voters of St. Louis and St. Louis County at a special election on February 9th, 1954, and amended at a general election on November 7th, 2000. The amendment to the Charter Plan established the Rate Commission to review and make recommendations to the District regarding changes in wastewater rates, stormwater rates, and tax rates proposed by the District. Upon receipt of a rate change notice from the District, the Rate Commission is to recommend to the Board of Trustees changes in a wastewater, stormwater, or tax rate necessary to pay interest and principal falling due on bonds issued to finance assets of the District, the costs of operation and maintenance, and such amounts as may be required to cover emergencies and anticipated delinquencies. Further, any change in a rate recommended to the Board of Trustees by the Rate Commission is to be accompanied by a statement that the proposed rate change is consistent with constitutional, statutory, or common law as amended from time to time, enhances the District's ability to provide adequate sewer and drainage systems and facilities or related services, is consistent with and not in violation of any covenant or provision relating to any outstanding bonds or indebtedness of the District, does not impair the ability of the District to comply with applicable federal or state laws or regulations as amended from time to time, and imposes a fair and reasonable burden on all classes of ratepayers. The Rate Commission received a rate change notice from the District on March 4th, 2019. Under procedural rules adopted by the Rate Commission, any person affected by the rate change proposal had an opportunity to submit an application to intervene in these proceedings. An application to intervene was filed by the Missouri Industrial Energy Consumers. Under the District's Charter Plan, the Rate Commission must on or before July 2nd, 2019, issue its report on the proposed rate change to the Board of Trustees of the District unless the Board of Trustees upon application of the Rate Commission extends the period of time for the issuance of the Rate Commission Report for an additional 45-day period. At its meeting on March 14th, 2019, the Board of Trustees approved the Rate Commission's request for an extension. The Rate Commission's report on the proposed rate change must now be issued on or before August 16th, 2019. Since March 4th, 2019, the Rate Commission has received testimony from District staff, the intervenor, and the rate consultant. The parties have also engaged in discovery requests. Technical conferences were held on April 8th and 9th, 2019, May 9th, 2019, and June 20th, 2019, where the participants and the Rate Commission were given an opportunity to ask questions of those submitting testimony. A pre-hearing conference for the purpose of identifying any issues raised by the Rate Commission by the rate-setting documents and the prepared testimony previously submitted was conducted on the record on July 12th, 2019. Each participant in the pre-hearing conference submitted on or before July 19th, 2019, a pre-hearing conference report describing the issues raised by the rate-setting documents and the prepared testimony, together with a brief description of such participants' position, if any, on each issue and the rationale therefore. Ratepayers who do not wish to intervene are permitted -- pardon me -- are permitted to participate in on-the-record public hearings conducted in several sessions beginning on May 14th, 2019, and concluding today. The Rate Commission's restated operational rules provide that this public hearing session will be held on the record, to permit ratepayers and taxpayers to testify regarding the proposed rate change, permit management of the District and our Board to testify regarding the proposed rate change, receive into evidence any prepared testimony previously submitted to the Rate Commission subject to any valid objections, together with discovery responses and transcripts of the technical conferences, permit the Rate Commission members to ask questions regarding any issue addressed by the prepared testimony or any other element of the proposed rate change, and permit closing statements by the District, the intervenors, and legal counsel of the Rate Commission. Before proceeding to other aspects of this public hearing, we will begin with a presentation by the District and a public comment period. Those wishing to speak should sign in on the sheet provided at the front door and will be called on in the order of the names listed thereon. Each ratepayer should identify themselves and any organizations represented by such ratepayer. We will now begin with the District's brief summary of the rate change proposal. After that, we will call on individuals for public comment and receive any questions that came in online. With that, let's begin with the presentation from the District. Mr. Holzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this presentation, I'm going to quickly give an overview of MSD, and then I'll go into a general details of the rate proposal that MSD staff has presented in front of the Rate Commission. Not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just some information for everybody. MSD is a government utility created under provisions of the Missouri State Constitution. We have a voter-approved charter. It is the organic law of MSD, and we use it in cooperation with state statute in order to run the District. The District has a Board of Trustees consisting of six members. Three of those are appointed by the Mayor of the City of St. Louis. Three of those are appointed by the County Executive of St. Louis County. There's a lot of data on this slide regarding statistics about MSD. The one thing I want to point out is MSD is two utilities. We are a wastewater utility, and we are a stormwater utility. Two completely separate operations, two completely different funding sources that cannot be mixed. We're here today to talk about the wastewater part of the utility. That's what the rate proposal is addressing. Let's go into the wastewater rates. MSD's wastewater proposal is for a four-year period from fiscal year 20 -- fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2024. It covers our debt service. It covers our operation and maintenance. It also covers our capital program. Very quickly, the debt service that MSD is proposing for both past debt and proposed debt is just under 25% of the total rate. Operations and maintenance is just slightly over 25% of the rate being proposed. Over 50% of the rate is being used in the Capital Improvement and Replacement Program. It consists of a $1.6 billion program over the next four years, consisting of more than 300 different projects in order to meet regulatory requirements, whether those are from a consent decree or from state or federal environmental regulations. Part of MSD's proposal is that MSD is asking the public to decide whether or not to authorize MSD to sell an addition -- to receive an additional $500 million worth of bonding authority in order to manage rates into an affordable fashion. Some of the things that will be accomplished with this capital improvement program will eliminate 50 more overflows from the wastewater system. These are pipes or overflows from manholes that go into local creeks and streams, as well as eliminating basement backups from the sanitary system. We'll build 60 new miles of wastewater sewers, inspect 64,000 feet of man -- 64,000 manholes. Part of our consent decree and part of our cost is also maintaining the existing system, make sure it operates functionally and as efficiently as it possibly can. Within this is the replacement of the incinerators at the Bissell and Lima Treatment Plant in order to bring it up to the most recent technology available, and finally, building a tunnel from the Fenton Treatment Plant to lower Meramec Treatment Plant. It'll help in two things. It will eliminate the Fenton Treatment Plant and its discharges to the Meramec River. It will also help us eliminate overflows that are located along the watershed that's within the lower Meramec area. Some of the key issues that were considered in the rate proposal that staff put together, one is our charter requirements. I'm not going to go over those now, but there's five requirements that staff was required to follow in putting this rate proposal together. The same five factors that the Rate Commission will use in evaluating our proposal, and that the same five factors that MSD's Board of Trustees will use in evaluating the Rate Commission's recommendations. Probably one of them, there are four, that, for instance, we have to cover bond debt coverage. We have to make sure we meet regulations. Probably the most important one is the proposed rate fair to all ratepayers. There'll be a decision regarding bonding or cash. If you take a look at our rate proposal on the website, and I'll go over the impacts of these two options. MSD cannot just decide to sell bonds in order to provide debt. It has to go to the ratepayers. Therefore, as we've done in the past with our proposal, we will offer an option in which, assuming that the ratepayers decide to allow additional bonding authority, we'll also have another option that we're seeking approval for, that if no additional bonding authority is offered, we have a different set of rates that'll cover that contingency. Affordability is one of the things we really pay attention to. We've been conscious of that during this whole time as we execute the consent decree that resulted from the lawsuit from the Department of Justice. MSD is under pressure from the Department of Justice, just like over 200 other cities throughout the United States. And so affordability is really important. And again, is equitability. Not only do we need to make sure things are affordable, we need to make sure that -- we need to make sure that they're equitable for everybody. I'll just hold it. There's some underlying rate assumptions that you'll see, just about any, as you would see in any rate case. One, we're making an assumption on customer growth. We're making assumptions on how much water is used. MSD's rates are not based on how much wastewater gets to us, but they're based on the amount of potable water usage that is reported to us by the various water supply authorities. We make some estimates based on inflation, what we anticipate inflation to be. There is consent decree compliance. MSD has met every one of its consent decree requirements. It is done so under budgeted on time. The plan is to continue that operation. And finally, we will maintain the Customer Assistance Program for low-income individuals. That program allows those individuals to pay one-half of the rates that you'll see today. We plan on continuing that program. So next is what we see in the rate proposal, and this is kind of the guts of the presentation, what is the impact on the customers. We're going to go over what the typical bills will be over the next four years. This is typical. It will not be for everybody. If somebody wants to do a comparison, the percentages here are accurate, but everybody's bill will be different. These are the typical bills. If a resident would like to use the bill they receive in August 2020, they can apply these percentages, and that will be the impact on their wastewater bills in the future. And the second item is, what do we bill on? So two, we have two different ways of measuring usage, and again, the information comes from the water providers. If you are in the county and you're served by Missouri American Water, MSD receives water usage from the Missouri American Water. We use the winter period in order to determine what -- in order to determine what amount of water goes down the sewer system. It's December, January, and February. We don't want to collect data on filling swimming pools, watering yards, or cleaning cars. That does not go down our wastewater system, therefore we use the winter quarter. In the city, the city water uses the attributes of homes as the basis for their water billing. MSD uses that same data in estimating how much water goes down the wastewater system and needs to be treated. So for the details, if you look at the top line, the top line is assuming the ratepayers approve an additional $500 million in bonding authority for MSD. Again, starting from your August 2020 bill, our typical customers are -- will be paying $55.57 per month. That will be starting in August 2020. Proposal is the following rate increases with bonding. The following year, we're -- MSD's proposal is a 1.9% increase in the average monthly cost, which would increase the average monthly bill for the typical customer to $56.63. The next year, 3.8% increase. So in our fiscal 2022, that would mean a monthly cost for the typical customer, $58.78. In fiscal year '23, again, a 3.8% increase, resulting in a monthly bill for our typical customers of $61.02. And in fiscal '24, a 3.8% increase, resulting in a typical bill of $63.36. Again, these are for typical customers. They may not reflect what somebody is paying now. However, those percentage increases are accurate, and you can use your August 2020 bill as a starting point for what can happen in the future. The second line, again, is assuming MSD is not authorized to sell an additional $500 million worth of debt. This is called pay-go. We will just simply use the cash you provide us in order to do the program. It's going to require more cash upfront, similar to buying a car or buying a house. If you pay cash for a car, you pay a lot now, and you're done. If you borrow money, a lot less impact now, but you pay over a longer period. So assuming that the voters decide not to authorize any additional bonding, the increases in fiscal '21 you'll see is the same, 1.9%. We do that now with most of our rate proposals, making sure both options have the same increase in the first year to give us flexibility for a date to vote on additional bonding authority. After that, you'll see increases of 15.1% in fiscal year 2022, 17.1% in fiscal year 2023, and 13.1% in fiscal 2024, resulting in fiscal 2024, for the typical customer under no bonds, a monthly rate for the typical customer of $86.29 per month. I want to review some of the cost savings that, from the previous four-year rate cycle that are impacting some of the rates that you see in the proposal for the next four years. One is the consent decree amendment. There was a change in regulations having to do with MSD's handling of biosolids, and that's the incinerator project I mentioned earlier. That change allowed us to go back to the EPA and have a discussion regarding that impact on our affordability numbers. The result of that was that the EPA agreed to allow us to extend our consent decree by five years. Instead of being done in 2034, it could now be done in 2039. That had a significant impact in helping us control rate increases for not just this four years, but for the years following that. Operation and maintenance expenses were $43 million, or 5% less than our anticipated expenditures. Most of those improvements came from the use of technology. An example would be how we investigate and clean our sewers. In the past, it consisted of a CCTV camera and four-man crew running through and taking a look at our sewers on a regular schedule. We've gone to a new technology that allows us to use ultrasonic wave technology. We simply put a transmitter on one manhole, receive it on the other, and that makes -- lets us determine how open that pipe is. That's an example of a sustainable savings. So not only did we see that savings in the previous four years, but those savings in operational costs are also reflected in our request for fiscal years '21 through '24. The capital program, we spent 7% less than what we had anticipated, about $110 million. Some of that comes from some really good bids that we're getting compared to the rest of the industry. Some of that is the fact that we have an ongoing program. A lot of it has to do with a lot of the communications and forward-thinking that our has -- our staff has in working with those who provide that kind of service to us. That $110 million hopefully is repeatable. We're constantly looking how we can more cost-effectively do our capital work. The extension of the consent decree is an example of that. We'll continue to do that and hopefully see more savings in the future. Finally, the financing cost, the cost of financing our previous debt, we came in $27 million less than what we thought the expenses were going to be over the previous four years. That's a case of active management of our debt by both our Secretary of Treasury and our Director of Finance, whether that's refinancing current debt whenever there's an opportunity to get a lower interest rate, or looking at all kinds of options, such as WIFIA loans to the federal government. We were one of the first cities in the United States to qualify for a WIFIA loan. Extensive use of the state SRS, which has a 70% subsidy on interest costs for loans. Staff does a very good job. Again, hopefully those are repeatable next year. Some changes in the tax code don't give us as many options as we had the previous four years, but we'll keep looking for ways to be cost-effective there. And I think what I want to give you is what happens to these savings. MSD is a municipal entity. We don't give bonuses. We don't have stockholders who need dividends. All of those savings are the first pot of money that's used in order to control rates for the next four years. That's what we do every four years. And so fortunately, again, some of these rates are one-timers. Hopefully, we can repeat them. You'll see the benefit of that. And the sustainable portion, you'll see not just the money that we save the previous four years helping keep rates down, but you'll also see us using those methodologies in order to keep our operations as cost-effective as possible in the next four years. As far as the timeline, MSD submitted its rate proposal and testimony to the Rate Commission on March 4th, 2019. At that time, staff also presented staff's rate proposal to our Board of Trustees. The Rate Commission is supposed to complete their process and make a recommendation to our Board of Trustees by August 16th, 2019. The Board of Trustees will take a look at those recommendations. They will compare them against, again, those five factors I mentioned previously, and they will make a decision as to how to move forward. Two things can happen. If the decision is to go forward with looking at the bonding scenario, the Board will also at that time decide to approve an ordinance that will allow us to go to the voters to decide whether or not $500 million in additional bonding authority is appropriate or not. There are potential vote dates in spring 2020, spring 2021. Somewhere in that gap, we'll try to find the place that you accomplish two things. One, make sure we can get a message to everybody so they understand that they vote yes. Here's the impact. They vote no. This is the impact. And also try and find a place where we can be as cost-effective as we can in holding the election. You will find, whatever the results of this rate proposal is, you will find those impacts will first hit in your bill in August 2020. Again, Rate Commission public hearings, if you take a look, we are at the last one on this list. This is the final public hearing that the Rate Commission is holding for this process. Mr. Chairman, that's the end of MSD's presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holzer. Are there any members of the public who are present who wish to comment? Is a sign-in sheet available? Please sign in and proceed to the microphone. We have Laura -- I'm sorry, Elaine Lara. Elaine?
I hear you.
Thank you so much for being here today.
You're welcome. Hello?
Yes, sir.
First, I must say thank you to MSD for doing a outstanding job of highlighting the needs of our community. I really appreciate it. It gives me hope. I'd like to talk about two features that were just presented, affordability and equity. It was stated that the city uses -- uses how large are the number of bedrooms, water closets, tubs, to determine your sewer bill. We were -- the information reviewed a typical, and I must assume, metered home. I believe that we're not looking at the bigger picture. As a member of the O'Fallon Community Developing Organization, I think we're not realizing that 46% of the people in that community are living below the poverty line. So when we talk about a typical metered sewer bill, we're forgetting a typical un-metered sewer bill. And I have a collection of sewer bills for that area that illustrates that we're doing as much as we can to make our community, our greater metropolitan area viable. Typical bill at this point for a small, one-water closet, $62.49. So if I look at the projection, that bill would grow to over $100. One utility, over $100 for an area where 46% are living under the poverty line. That's just one area. I think we need to look in terms of a different rate for city dwellers. Since it's not based upon actual water usage, it should be billed at a different rate than for metered homes. The base charge, instead of being $23.83 for everyone, for those who are un-metered, should be lower. I've been living in the same place for 30-odd years. It was built 30 years ago, and I think it was unfair for the city to have no meter, and I think that was discriminatory. It was not equitable. The base charge for the number of baths, rooms, water closets should be reduced for city dwellers. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Elaine. I appreciate that comment, and we'll certainly take that into account in our deliberations moving forward. I really appreciate that. Next public comment? Next public comment? John Kaufman?
That's right.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. Good morning, MSD Board, Rate Commission. My name is John Kaufman. I'm an attorney for the Consumers Council of Missouri. And we, among other things, spend a lot of our time looking at utility rates and advocating for affordability with an increasing focus on lower income or vulnerable customers. And first of all, I'd like to compliment MSD for having a good number of public hearings and going throughout the service territory and for having this very open process. And also, I wanted to praise MSD for the cost savings that they have found over the last few years. This has been a very difficult four years for most sewer customers. I think that in our communication with folks, there is a great deal of rate shock that people are recovering from, a lot of frustration and angst over how quickly the rates have increased. I don't think any other utility service in this area has gone up as quickly or as dramatically. And we understand certainly the constraints that the consent decree applies, but there is a very frustrated base of wastewater customers out there. And we have looked, we've read all the information that has been supplied to the Rate Commission, and we would, I mean, we testified before, but we would like to, again, urge you to put affordability at the foremost of all the considerations that you have as you look at this information. We support the downward adjustments that have been recommended by the Missouri industrial energy consumers and would, you know, are here to recognize that you do have a discretion. The Rate Commission has a range of options. We understand that there will need to be a rate increase over the next four years, but it doesn't necessarily have to be as much as has been proposed. So we would urge you to look at those reductions and to do your very best to not recommend an increase that is any higher than it needs to be. There are folks in the community that really don't have another dollar in their monthly budget to pay for this. This is an essential service. They have no other choice for it, and it affects everyone, including, you know, including those of the lowest means in our community. We do appreciate the customer assistance program that has been done, and we would like to work with MSD to publicize that and to promote that and to make sure the folks get it. But we also recognize that not everyone will be able to find their way to that customer assistance program. Not everyone knows how to do that or will be able to do it. And there are also folks who may not quite apply for that, who are struggling. We also have done what we can to encourage folks to provide their comments through this public process, and we have a few more comments that we had that I'd like to submit to the record. We have 30 more individuals that wanted to comment, and if I could submit this to the record, this would, can I just hand these over? I'd like to add those to the other comments that we've collected around the community. We did not tell individuals what to, we told them about this process, and you'll find, I think there's 30 more letters there. One of them is even in favor of the rate increase. So that tells you, these are not form letters that we necessarily put together. These are actual, unique, individual comments on the rate increase. I think that about covers what I would say, but I would end with one more comment. To the degree that MSD can reduce the size of this rate increase for the next four years, I think that would engender a lot of goodwill and would help with the public support for the bond issuance. We are in support of the bond issuance, but I think sometimes members of the public are frustrated if the bond issuance is proposed on the ballot as sort of a threat, you know, like either you propose this or we're going to hit you with a really big rate increase. I think that the public will respond better to a message that says, we've done everything we can to tighten our belt, we continue to find cost savings, and look what we have done to keep the rate increase down. I think that kind of a positive message would help the most as we're going towards the bond issuance on the ballot in the spring. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Thanks very much. We'll certainly distribute those letters and make them part of the record for all the Rate Commissioners. Any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time? Hearing none, we will go to our online questions. Andy, if you could facilitate that, then we'll steer appropriately.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We do have a new question from this morning on Facebook, and I do want to remind our viewers at home, if you have a question on any of the proceedings today, please submit it either on Facebook, on our MSD Rate Commission page, or on our Twitter feed, the MSD Rate Commission Twitter feed. I'll begin with Joyce Mohammed. My sewer bill is already over $50 a month, and you raised my rates just a few years ago, not even five years ago. Couldn't the leadership take a pay cut?
Maybe I will, I'll answer that one, and then I will throw it to Mr. Holsher. The Rate Commission takes all the different factors into consideration that we mentioned earlier, and the compensation for the staff is set by the trustees of the district based on their overview of the overall situation. We'll certainly, I would think, forward that concern to the trustees, and the trustees obviously have the ability to review all of our findings. So the compensation of the staff, we will certainly, in all these proceedings, make sure that there is a fair and reasonable fee and a fair and reasonable compensation for MSD staff. Mr. Holsher, do you have anything to add?
I think the only thing I'd add, kind of building on the chairman's comments, the rates that we pay, the salaries we pay to our individual employees, we do a study every 10 years to determine what the market value is of specific jobs. I will tell you, and I will speak just to the senior management at MSD, our current salary structure is at or slightly below what those market rates are. This is reviewed. Our Board of Trustees are not the only ones that can set salaries, except for myself and the Secretary of Treasury. We also have a Civil Service Commission who needs to review any proposed rate structure, any proposed salary structure moving forward. So there are two sets of reviews here. One is by our Civil Service Commission, who then make a recommendation to our Board of Trustees, and then our Board of Trustees will act on what those salaries are. But I will tell you, we are regularly studying those. We want to pay a fair rate to everybody. Again, I would offer, not knowing if this is part of the comment, there are no bonuses. There are no, there is no extra pay. We are municipal government. We aren't like some of the other utilities you have, so there aren't any bonuses. And we pretty religiously stick to those pay structures and make sure we pay our folks fairly and don't overpay them.
There are also, Mr. Holsher, aren't there also a significant number of the district staff who are part of collective bargaining units?
Yeah, so I, good point, Mr. Chairman. So 2/3 of MSD staff are also members of union. So for those folks who are union eligible, there's actually a third step. We will do those studies, and prior to going to the Civil Service Commission, for those who have negotiating bodies, we'll actually complete those negotiations prior to going to the Civil Service Commission, and then those same kind of negotiations will have an impact on what the Board of Trustees decide will be the salaries for the individual employees.
Thank you, and thanks for the question. Andy?
This is from Robert in Afton. Rates have already tripled, but they're coming back for more. More flooding, more sewer backups, less service. Sounds like a raise is in order. Can't we tighten our belt and make do like everyone else does?
Any Rate Commissioners care to comment on that particular question? I would say that, I guess my response would be that, in a large part, the rates and the work that is being done by the district are driven by a consent decree that was entered into with the district, Coalition for the Environment, and the Environmental Protection Agency. There are requirements that have to be met, and construction and improvements to the system that need to be made. The sewer overflow issue in terms of flooding was mentioned in the question. There was a ballot issue last year, or earlier this year, I don't remember, concerning stormwater rates. The public voted not to increase the stormwater rates, so the work that is being proposed and is part of this rate case does not apply to stormwater and will not address the flooding that was addressed in that question. The work that is contemplated as part of this rate case all has to do with the consent decree work and the work that's required as part of that settlement. I will say that the district has been proactive in regularly looking at that agreement, and in fact, this particular rate case includes an extension of that timeline to complete that work, so there is, in fact, a lesser rate now to elongate the time over which that work needs to be completed. Any other Rate Commissioners care to comment? Yes, Mr. Ratsky?
In the testimony that we heard from the district, in each of the areas, operation and maintenance and the capital program, they have experienced cost savings. We recognize that, we looked at it. I think in Brian's comments this morning, he indicated that future cost savings also be, those cost savings were rolled into this rate increase request, and any future cost savings will be also looked at to be rolled into making the rates lower. So we are looking at them tightening their belt and reducing costs in their operations and the capital program, and hope that continues.
Any of the other Rate Commissioners have any additional comments? Andy, please proceed.
We have another question along those lines. This one is from Nick from Mountain City. Efficiencies of new technologies should bring prices down, not up. Haven't we paid for this infrastructure many times over?
I will say that the infrastructure that's in place has been paid for once, and in many instances, it was paid for 40, 50, or 60 years ago. And in many instances, unfortunately, because of the wear and tear on the system and the expansion of the system and the new environmental requirements, does need to be upgraded. The system that was put in 60 years ago certainly does not meet the regulatory environment of today, and I think that has required upgrades. Certainly, I think the district is taking advantage of technology, I think especially in the disposal and incineration world. I think there's a lot of things that have gone on there to take advantage of the technology. Are there any particular technology issues you'd care to comment on, Mr. Holsher?
I guess I would point out, you mentioned the incinerators. I did point out, part of the consent decree is how we regularly inspect and clean sewers. I mentioned the technology there. We went from large trucks with four-man crews to a pickup truck with two-man crews and get twice as much done per day. Without going any details, we have a lot of plants that are almost fully automated, and it's been a huge reduction. It's not a recent thing that's happened. We did a lot of the automation, starting in the late 90s through the 2000s, and most of that's in place. So we're already seeing the benefits of those. And we're looking at new technologies all the time. There's an option that comes by my door, one of my director's door, once a month, and we consider it, and in some cases even do pilots to see if there's ways we can save additional funds.
Any other Rate Commissioners care to comment on that question? Thank you. Andy?
We have another question about the water bills. The question is, don't raise our fees. My water bill has already doubled. Won't that make my MSD bill go up as well? That's from Diane in St. Louis.
Is that in St. Louis City?
It just says St. Louis.
St. Louis. I think that may go back to the comment that was made earlier, depending on location and the time that the water bill was measured. If the, please correct me here, but the MSD rates are based on water usage during non-peak water usage times, that, as you said earlier, swimming pools and sprinklers are not included. It certainly is tied to the, to the, not so much the cost of the water bill, but the number of gallons that are consumed as part of the system. It's based on the number of gallons that enter the system. So if the water rates change, it's not directly proportional to the sewer rates, it's based on the quantity of water that enters the system, not on the cost of that water. Any other comments? Andy, proceed.
Okay. We have several more, but I do want to tell the folks at home, if you do have comments, if you just joined us, please submit those comments on Facebook, on the MSD Rate Commission page, or on Twitter. We're checking those, and we'll be updating those as they come in. We have a question from Kim. She does not give her location, but she says, "It's easy. Spend more wisely, no rate hike. MSD has already tried raising rates twice a year."
Is that a question or a comment?
It seems to be more of a comment than a question, but it might be referring to what Mr. Holsher was talking earlier about the wastewater and the stormwater side of things, and that might be worth clarifying a little bit for Ms. White.
Thank you. Yes, the, as was stated, it is two separate houses within the MSD world. The stormwater was looked at last year by this Rate Commission in an attempt to do some things to alleviate some of the flooding that I think we've all seen over the last couple of months. The public decided they did not care to invest in that and move in that direction. In the instance of the wastewater, the public, in essence, has decided, through the various governmental agencies that represent them, that this is work that needs to be done and costs that need to be incurred to protect the health of the community.
Okay. We have another comment. This is from Vicki. She does not give her location as well. Simply says, "No, my MSD bill is already three times my water bill as it is. No, no more rate increases."
America is a great place, and Vicki may vote when this hits the ballot.
You know, that's another question that we have heard at a number of the meetings that we've had. Mr. Holsher mentioned that this is the sixth of the meetings that we've had. One of the questions that we've heard over and over again is, is my rate going up either way? If I vote yes, is it going up? If I vote no, is it going up? That might be worth clarifying as well.
Yes, the rate is going up under either circumstance, and that has to do with, as I said earlier, the consent decree work. This is a requirement by the federal government. If the rates do not go up, running through that scenario, if the rates do not go up, the work does not get accomplished, the EPA or MSD falls out of compliance with the consent decree. At that point, as I think has happened in some other communities, the federal government can come in and impose a rate that they deem to be sufficient to complete the work that would bring the district back into compliance. So as I see this in the big picture, this is a case of self-rule that the voters in the St. Louis community have the choice of whether they want to, there are really three options to pay for this work that the federal government has decided needs to be done. The first is to pay for it all upfront, which is the highest rate that's out there in this rate proposal. Second option is to incur some debt and use bonding and keep the rates lower but still increase. The third option, which the trustees have always, is to not increase the rates, run the risk of not completing the work, and hope and see what the federal government decides to do in terms of to do in terms of imposition of a rate or imposition of something on the public to complete the work that they've said needs to be done. So the answer is yes.
Okay. Another question that we had two meetings ago at the location in Maryland Heights. Can I conserve water and lower my MSD rates if they're going up?
The answer is yes. You can conserve water during the periods that water consumption is measured, which is from December 1st through...
The month of December through the month of February.
Okay, the entire month of December, the entire month of January, entire month of February. Those are the three months when water usage is measured, and lower water consumption during those three months would in fact lower the rate that MSD uses to do the calculations.
Or metered.
It lowers the total...
Far metered users. And I, as far as folks who are on the number of appliances within their home, I would have to ask Mr. Holster if there's any option there. I don't think water consumption makes any difference in a facility that is in the city.
Correct. In an un-metered site, if you use more water than is indicated by the attributes, then you will not bill more. If you use less water, then you will not bill less. You're based on the attributes, again, not MSD system, this is the water company's system of determining potable water usage.
Mr. Holster, could you just take a minute and briefly go over the history of why some of the district's customers are metered and why some are un-metered?
Yeah, I can. Again, the history's pretty simple, and it's not unique to St. Louis. Wastewater utilities, there's two industry-standard ways, while there's other variations of this, two industry-standard ways of determining a wastewater bill. One is by metering actual water usage or using that data that comes from the water provider, and with the assumption that that is a good representation of, especially when you use the winter period, that's a good representation of what then would go down the wastewater drain. It's a typical example. In those areas, and St. Louis is not unique to this, which don't, they use other methodologies. Now, I'm not talking about the water providers, not MSD. The water providers use other methodologies to determine what, how to assign those bills. Usually, it's an attribute-type method. Again, it's counting bathrooms, it's counting water closets, it's counting tubs. The idea is to, for the water companies, to make a good estimate as to what would be reflective of water usage, and for MSD's purposes, it is also those attributes they use are reflective of what would be a winter usage. They're all internal uses. So they don't charge more. For instance, City Water doesn't charge more if you have a pool. That's not something that they do. So that's a pretty industry-standard method of doing it. MSD, through litigation and setting this process up, kind of post Hancock, the methodology we use now is one that has been reviewed and approved by the Missouri Supreme Court. And that's the methodology we're using, which is very similar to what's done throughout the country.
And you use information from Missouri American Water and from the City Water Division to, those are your inputs into...
Those are the inputs as well. I believe Kirkwood's distribution system, I think City of Kirkwood also has a distribution system, and we use the data from them. As a matter of fact, we purchase the water usage data from those entities, and we use that information. And that, the ability to purchase that data is per state statute.
And those two municipalities have chosen to use non-metered water systems?
They use metered. Missouri American and Kirkwood use metered. The City of St. Louis currently, by their decision, have decided to use an un-metered method in order to measure the usage for residential customers. They do meter commercial, and we have a rate that we charge in the city for commercial customers, based on the amount of usage that's reported to us from the water company.
Thank you. Andy?
Great. I'll just remind everybody, if they have questions at home, please submit them on Facebook or Twitter. If you have questions here in the room, and I see a couple of more people that have questions, we're going to circulate a sign-in sheet. Please sign in, and the chairman will recognize you when you have that question, or that sign-in done. I do have another question on Facebook, Mr. Chairman. They do this process every few years. They've raised rates, promising they'll give it back when they raise their billions of dollars, and then they don't. Does MSD give back to the community? This is from Cynthia.
I've been on the rate commission since its inception, and I would certainly refer to any of the other rate commissioners on this. I honestly don't recall any discussion during these rate hearings of a give-back or rebate to any of the customers.
I do remember at one of our meetings, I believe it was at Maryland Heights, it may have been at Umsel, that Mr. Holster mentioned programs that can help customers who need assistance. This question may have been referring to that, too. Does MSD contribute to those assistance programs?
Well, the customer assistance program that was mentioned by Mr. Kaufman has been part of the district's operations, I think, for many years, that people who have concerns about affordability of the fees or charges from MSD can come to the district or call the district and go through a process to apply for the customer assistance program and gain relief from a portion of their bill. I know that that's part of the thing that we take into consideration as part of the rate case hearing, is looking at that affordability index and looking at how many folks may need to take advantage of that customer assistance program, and in fact, the lesser rates that are paid by folks as part of that customer assistance program are included in our overall projections of revenues for the district. Mr. Holster, would you take a minute and talk about the process to take advantage of the customer assistance program?
Sure. Yeah, and I'll even expand a little on some of the options. So again, MSD's program's been in place for quite a while. In the last five, six, seven years, we put a lot of effort in expanding where the access is to that system. It used to be, "Call MSD, we'll help you fill out the paperwork, and we'll see if you're eligible." And I'll give credit to our Director of Finance, Marion G., has been very creative in how we now get the word out. I guess the simplest example I'll give you is if somebody goes to Lihip to seek federal assistance for their utility bills, Lihip will let them know our systems, our credit is also available, our program, and help them fill out that paperwork. So there's a lot of other entities that we've done that with, either as informational or else to assist in the completion of those documents. I will let you know this issue's important also, just so you know, at a national level. There's discussions going on right now, primarily driven by the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. MSD's a member of that body. I'm on their national board. And there is legislation, the start of legislation going through Congress, now you don't know how this is going to work out, to have a similar federal assistance program for low-income customers for wastewater, to have a federal assistance program to help pay for that as well. So we're doing, not just St. Louis, but everywhere, trying to do things to kind of assist folks on helping the communities complete these federally mandated programs with regard to the Clean Water Act, and do them as cost-effectively and as affordably as possible.
So if I feel that I've hit these rate increases, or this has gone beyond my affordability level, I call, I go online, what's the process?
So you can call. I think if you go on our website, I think there is a way you can submit information on our website. If nothing else, there's a phone number you can call. We can walk you through the process. The other thing is, the application, Marion, help me here, it's not just the date of application, we will also go back. Is that correct?
Yes, we have the potential to go back and retroactively if we have body credit.
So if we have information when somebody applies that indicates they've been in a low-income situation for an extended period, we will actually go back and adjust past bills as well, once they qualify for the low-income program.
And how does that review process work? How long does it take, and who makes the determination?
If we want, I don't have those details. I'd have to have Marion answer that question, if necessary.
Let me do it from here.
Do it right there.
Typically, we, from the time we get the application in from the customer, it takes us a couple of weeks to review that application. Sometimes, there's information that may be missing, so we will have to contact the customer again to ensure that we get all the information to make that determination. But normally, the process to review the application takes a few weeks. After we get the information, depending on when that customer is next billed, it's probably going to be at least one or two billing cycles at the most before they see that on their bill.
Thank you, Mr. G., and thank you, Mr. Holster. Andy?
That's all the questions I have for right now on Facebook and Twitter. If you have more questions, please submit them now on Facebook, the MSD Rate Commission page, or on Twitter, on the Rate Commission Twitter feed. Mr. Chairman, I believe you have another question in the room.
We have Teresa McCain. Teresa, would you come up to the microphone there and make your comment or your question? Thank you so much for being here today.
Thanks. Yeah, I just stepped in because the Facebook was kind of in and out, and so I missed, someone had also submitted a question, and I didn't hear the answer. Why is the MSD bill three times like the water bill? That's just kind of something I was pondering. I know that someone asked that. I guess you guys already answered it. If you could just give me a little quick recap.
Without knowing the specifics, I will try to give a recap, okay? The water rates are set by two different, or three different agencies. I guess the water rates are set by the City of Kirkwood, the City of St. Louis, or Missouri American Water. The only connection between the two is the quantity of water that is used by any one of those systems that goes into the calculation of the sewer rates. So whatever those utilities decide to do, those other three utilities decide to do either raise or lower their rates, has basically zero impact on what the MSD rates are. The MSD rates are set based on the quantity of water that enters the system, not the cost of that water.
Oh, I'm understanding that. I guess just, my question is the basically, this is the water we put on our food and in our bodies and on our bodies, that it costs so much less to treat that and make that potable, but it costs so much more when it goes out of our homes, and I know it has things that need to be, you know, incinerated and this and that, but why does it cost so much more to treat it after we've used it?
Not being a hydrologist, does anybody? I honestly don't know. Maybe there's some experts in the room that understand water management better than me.
So I think you hit it. It's each individual entity as to what's going on. One of the pieces you may have missed, the rates we're charging, about a quarter of it is for operation and maintenance. Another quarter of it is for the debt that's assigned to the capital program, and then we have the capital costs. So what position any particular municipality is in, there are municipalities throughout the United States, where water costs more than wastewater. Oftentimes, it depends on what the discharge standards are, how clean we have to make it to discharge it back to creeks and streams. But the biggest driver is what, as you'll see in our rate, is what are the capital improvements, the entities decide are necessary, or in our case, they've been mandated by the Department of Justice and a federal judge. That usually drives where somebody happens to be at a certain time. So I don't have a comparison. I think the chairman hit it on the head. It depends on particular instances and where you're located, and what city you're in, and how you're using them.
So I guess I would say that in terms of the things that the district does, taking whatever is in the sewers and the wastewater system, there are certain standards that have to be met before that is discharged into the rivers and streams, that then becomes available for the water company. The water company has their intakes on the rivers and streams, where they bring the water in, put it in settling tanks, apply the chemicals that they need, and pump it through the system. I'm a simple kind of guy, but I would think that if we stopped or lessened the treatment before it got into rivers and streams, it would probably increase the activity that would need to take place on the supply side of treatment that would need to be done if the streams and the rivers got more polluted.
I guess it depends where you are on the river.
Exactly.
Because I would like to know, like, in Ohio, you know, upstream, do they have higher costs for their wastewater, because, you know, the water's going to be flowing down to us, or do they have lower costs, because we're going to have to take care of their waste from upriver? What is the comparison to other cities? Do you have any idea?
We did look at comparison to other rates as part of this rate case. Indianapolis, Kansas City, I think there were top 10. Go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Atlanta was the highest in the country, and we did compare it to Indianapolis, Kansas City, and so forth. I think MSD, and Brian may be able to clarify this, but I believe MSD is right in the middle of the rate structures of comparable cities, maybe even lower than the middle.
Yeah, so the monthly cost, I think that last rate proposal just put us above median. We are slightly above median now. Again, a lot of this is driven by where you're at in your program. I mentioned, I don't know if you caught this, MSD, this court-imposed capital program, which drives the system, currently scheduled to be completed in 2039. You compare that to a San Francisco, who just finished theirs this year, and are under threat of potentially another consent decree to start over again. It depends on where the systems are at. Mr. Hawes is right, Atlanta has a large number. And another thing that impacts the rates, the point is just how complicated this is. MSD is an independent municipal entity and we're the sole source of revenues for our services. Many of the other utilities, Kansas City and some of these other places, there are revenues that go towards the wastewater operations that aren't necessarily reflected in your wastewater bill, and those go in as well. So it's a very complicated comparison. I think your question was wastewater versus drinking water.
Correct.
I don't have specific examples with you. I know it's been both ways.
But I was also wondering, yeah, comparatively to other cities. So there are no other fundings that you get from the city or the state for any of your operations? It's all from the consumers?
Our sole source of funds are the rates. We take advantage of funding as much as we can. We are probably, as amazing as it seems, one of the more successful entities in getting any kind of federal contributions in the range of $1 to $2 million a year towards some part of our operations. We're fairly active on the hill and trying to take advantage of any kind of grant opportunities we have. Little history, you go back to the 80s and early 90s, the federal government, and 70s, the federal government, when they put these in place, were paying in some cases up to 75% of the cost of the improvements. MSD took full advantage of that. I mean, there weren't treatment plants here back when I was born. Only 5% of the waste was being treated, and so MSD took full advantage when those were in place. For economic reasons, they've stopped doing those grant programs, and while there are low-interest loans and those type of opportunities, most wastewater utilities are pretty much on their own, using their rate base as the source for these funds.
Okay. I guess that would explain why the bill has just gone crazy within the last several, like, 10 years or so.
Right, so it's where we're at. I'll extend it a little more. I just mentioned San Francisco. The first folks who the Department of Justice took action against with regard to water quality issues are those in the sensitive areas. The sensitive areas are coasts, folks who have tidal waters. That's the reason San Francisco is now done. We were in what's EPA Region 7. We have the biggest, largest receiving streams with the least sensitivity. They're sensitive, but least sensitivity of any place in the country. You'll find the middle part of the country was the last one to be acted against. So we signed our consent decree in 2011, we agreed, signed in 2012. Kansas City was on about the same schedule. They haven't progressed as far as we have yet. But I'll give you San Francisco, which signed one years ago, and they're getting ready for their second one. Same thing with, for instance, folks who discharge to the Great Lakes. They're going through various things. So, part of the disparity across the country happens to be where you're at in federally enforced actions.
And then, one more quick question. I think I heard you say that rates were going to be charged now if you're on a meter just for the winter months. Is that something new that you were discussing?
That is the measurement period, that the months of December, January, and February are the months that the water suppliers provide that data to MSD that shows the water consumption during those three months, and then those numbers are used to set the wastewater rates going forward for the following year.
And that's something new?
That's always been in place. We've always done that.
For city and county?
Well, in the city, they, we're not getting water data. We're getting attribute data per home, similar, based on what the city water, how they bill their customers.
Correct.
Outside of that, for where you have billed customers and metered customers, we've always used the winter rates as being a fair representation of what goes down the sewer during the 12-month period.
Okay. So, any questions about individual bills? I'll handle them. Okay, because I did have, my billing is on a meter. I'm actually in the city, and I heard your comments on Facebook earlier. And honestly, being on a meter is not necessarily a good thing, because you have one toilet that runs for a little bit longer, and next thing you know, you have a toilet...
I think I expressed that.
$30 water bill.
That is one of the differences. You can be either on the positive or negative side. I would ask, Marion, have one of your staff raise their hand. I don't want to interrupt this, but she's got a question about our bill. Can we assign somebody to go outside the door with her?
That's great. And one more question about the bond really quickly. So, how, you said the bond would make the rates increase more slowly if it's approved, and as far as, once the bond ends, what are we looking at? How many years is the bond good for? And like, how long does that kind of stabilize our waste rates?
The length, anyone care to comment on the length of that bond? I think, I want to say those are 20-year bonds?
So, we go to market, well, first thing we look is finding lower-cost bonding. So, our first source is a state revolving fund. That's a federally-supported program through the state of Missouri, and they give us a 70% decrease in the interest cost. We use as much of those as we can. They are set right now as 20-year bonds. Then, we did recently take advantage of a new federal program called WIFIA, where we're actually borrowing from the Treasury. Those bonding rates are something over 3%. And the duration on those are somewhat negotiable, but I think they're, don't hold me this, 25 to 30 years. Then, when we go out in the market, we will negotiate various rates with individuals as it comes in, trying to get a nice level payment schedule, and whatever's the most cost-effective for us is, do you pay more early? Do you hold off principal payments? That's part of the negotiation whenever we go to market.
And then, once the construction is complete, would we be looking at declining bills then? Because this is obviously for upgrades and construction, or we would still see increases?
So, when we get to 2039, when the last piece is completed, by then, what you will have is operating cost, some capital to maintain the system, and whatever the bond service or debt services that we've accumulated up to that date. Again, that's 2039. Is it possible we could top out before that? That is possible as well. Right now, we're projecting that until we reach whatever that peak happens to be, which is oftentimes driven by interest rates and things like that. We're not suspecting we're going to get too far off of inflation as to whatever increases we ask for in the future until we get to the point of, hey, we now don't have to increase rates anymore. We can continue on with the program. That'll happen somewhere in the future. It won't be in this next four years, or matter of fact, it won't be in the next eight years. But we're trying to hold things as close to an inflationary rate as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Marion, can you find somebody to... Okay.
Andy, are there any more questions that came in online?
We do not have any more questions online. Do we have any more questions in the room?
I guess before we close this, I'd just like to thank Elaine and John and Teresa for taking time to be here today. It means a lot to hear from the public, so thank you all three for being here. Andy?
With that, I'd like to thank everybody watching online. This video will be available on the Rate Commission Facebook page, and you will be able to continue any comments if you're watching it not live, and you go back and you want to have any questions answered. We'll be continuing to monitor for that, and we'll forward the questions on for the Rate Commission. Thank you very much for watching. That concludes our live stream, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Chairman for the rest of the meeting.